I think it's all good.
Okay, I would like to call to order the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee. It's December fourteenth, twenty twenty seven P M. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law MGLC thirty A. Section twenty, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through the high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. I would like to thank John Scavlam and Stephanie Boyd for presenting to the committee this evening. We heard from the community composed of community members, parents, teachers, coaches, and students during our comment forum at five P M. This hour gives us a deeper dive into two general viewpoints and an opportunity for the committee to ask clarifying questions, all in the hopes of bringing the new members up to speed in this discussion. John and Stephanie will both have fifteen minutes, and then we will move into the question portion of the forum. So Stephanie, you are up first.
Thank you. I am going to share my screen. That's not the right thing that I want to share. Okay, can you see that now? So, thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for your dedicated interest and commitment to this issue in particular at the school committee, but all of the work that you do for our schools. So I think the question we're trying to address tonight is whether we want to have artificial turf or natural turf. I've been thinking about this question for a while, but I also think that this might not be the question that we want to really be addressing. So what I want to do tonight is share some of my thoughts about this issue and perhaps offer a framework of how we might move forward. And also, I think spotlight some of the issues that have been of concern to a number of our community members. So really, I think the fundamental question that we're trying to address is that the man, the Mount Greylock Regional School System needs some kind of strategic infrastructure plan for its athletic and physical education programs over the next ten to twenty years. And we need to be able to look at a really clear and rational approach to decision making, and we need to support all that by a well crafted financial plan. And I think some of the comments that we heard earlier tonight sort of reflect on those issues. And since the last time that many of us got together to talk in depth about this issue, a lot of things have changed, which makes us think about maybe we need to step back and reflect. So we have many new people in the administration. We have new school committee members. We are in the midst of a coronavirus pandemic that is occupying our time now and long into the future and changing many things. Last, we have changing enrollments where the numbers that Jake presented last week, twenty to thirty percent drop in enrollment over the next ten years or so. How will that affect us? And a very uncertain financial future. So far, the pandemic has not really made a big impact on economic returns, but it may in the future, and we may have other pressures on the endowment. So how do all those things affect, you know, our decision that we need to make soon about grass or artificial turf or what? So typically, when I look at an issue, I try to address the pros and cons. And so if we're looking at this grass turf field, we might think about some criteria like financial, performance, health, environment, community desires. Now, I've worked in this business for a long time. I used to be the manager of the facilities operations at Williams College. The grounds people and the artificial turf fields there were part of my responsibility. I was the founding director of the sustainability office at Williams. I spent many years working as a financial and business management consultant. So I'm bringing all those perspectives to bear on this, on this problem. So let's just look a little bit in detail of what's going on at Greylock. Many people are not as familiar about where the fields are located. This is the John Allen Field. Here are some of the other practice and playing fields out there. We have a lot of room on that campus. Here are softball and baseball fields. And here is the proposed location of the new field, whether it's artificial or grass, and a potential new track. But there's lots of other room on that campus. So last summer, Traverse did a little financial analysis as part of their public forum to help us try to understand the costs associated with particularly the grass or artificial field options. They showed us this diagram that attempts to tell us that artificial turf in a cost per playable hour is much cheaper than natural grass. They also, in a document, I think it was in the F A Q document that was shared with the community, said the costs are comparable of these two options over a twenty to twenty-five year period. Now, what's important about that is that they use the two thousand two hundred and fifty hours, playable hours per year for the artificial turf and five hundred and twenty for natural grass. So does any of this help us make a decision? I think you heard earlier this evening, Ken Comer, an economist at Williams College, said really, we need to look at present value dollars in order to evaluate two disparate income or spending streams. And when we do that with these fields, I use the numbers provided by the consultant, which I think to some degree understate the cost of the artificial turf option and overstate the natural grass option. But let's just use their numbers just as, you know, a way to highlight what's going on. We see that over twenty-five years, if we add up the costs of both these fields, that the artificial turf field costs us about two hundred thousand dollars more. But if we look at the present value using a discount rate of three or five or seven percent, we find that the artificial turf field cost us, in fact, four to five hundred thousand dollars more over its lifetime. So, you know, that is not to say that we shouldn't do artificial turf, but we should recognize that we are paying a significant premium financially for that field. And there are other people who have done similar studies. Tury, the Toxic Use Reduction Institute at UMass, have done similar analysis, but on an annualized basis, showing that artificial turf costs sixty-five thousand dollars a year versus thirty-three thousand dollars a year for, for grass. So then we have this whole concept of playability, which has been touted as, you know, the major reason that we want to have artificial turf. In the F A Q provided by the consultant and Phase Two Committee, they suggested that we would be using this field about twenty-five hours a week. This was based on a comment made that it needs to be brushed or maintained every hundred hours or once per month, so that's about twenty-five hours per week. So if we use the field twenty-five hours per week, every week of the year, that would add up to thirteen hundred hours. More realistically, it's going to be somewhere between six fifty and nine hundred for when the students are available to use the field. Another way to calculate these numbers is to actually go through how many weeks a year do the sports play and, you know, really calculate a schedule for that field. I attempted to do that. I don't have the right answer. It's somewhere around eight hundred to nine hundred hours per year ideally. You can only do that on an artificial turf field. If you've got a grass field, we have rain days, we have bad weather days, we have trying to play on grass in March, it's not going to work. So let's reduce that number by twenty percent for, for the grass option. Now, when we look at the cost per playable hour, we see that grass is, in fact, the cheapest option, and artificial turf is more expensive. That still doesn't necessarily rule it out, but it helps us understand the facts that we're playing with. When we build an artificial turf field, we're actually building in three to four times the capacity that we need. Is this a good use of the call, the school's finances is the question? Let's take a minute to look at the environment. These pictures over here are my hand. They are not those scary pictures that you see in propaganda about these fields. These were taken at a nearby field that is very well maintained. This is crumb rubber found in the stream bed of where the storm drain from a field empties. And it's pretty much, you know, ninety percent crumb rubber at the outfall of the storm drain from the field. This is broken pieces of grass that fly around. This is why you need to replace the field every ten years or so, because the grass has been broken and it's no longer viable option. There are estimates in Europe that each year a field loses a hundred and fifty pounds or so of either the pellets or the grass. That's the equivalent of five thousand, over five thousand plastic water bottles. So while the materials that we use in this field are very similar to building materials, they're loose and they get dispersed in the environment. And this, this is like for real, and this very similar situation will happen at Williams College. One of our previous speakers this evening mentioned a study that was just released last week about how these bits of crumb rubber have been killing salmon. This is a real impact, and we could possibly contributing to these kind of negative effects in the environment. Another concern that people have talked about is PFAS chemicals, very hazardous if they're found in the water supply. One of the grass suppliers provided us was a certificate saying, yeah, yeah, it's all good. We don't have any of these PFAS. I actually called this grass manufacturer. They have done absolutely no testing to verify that their product doesn't include PFAS chemicals. They have not received any third party verification. They have not verified that their suppliers have, you know, completely checked their materials. And this company makes products that we know use PFAS chemicals. So there is no certification that there is no PFAS included in the grass. Like, it may very well not be there, but you can't take this certification as proof that there isn't. I also talked to this supplier of fields about this recyclable plant that they have. So they promised you that their newest field is a hundred percent recyclable. There are many problems with that. Firstly, they have not sold one of these fields. There are no recycling facilities in the USA. And one of our previous commenters also has mentioned that there's really no market for recycled materials today, and you'd be paying a premium of seventy-seven thousand dollars for this supposed recyclable field. So we can do some mitigation strategies, and some of them I know are in the works. One is let's get rid of that crumb rubber infill material and use Brockville. The average price on the bids that received last year would be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar premium for the Brockville infill. And there's probably environmental problems associated with that as well. We could design a system, and this is what advocates in Europe are doing, that would contain the material on the site, particularly if you're planning on snow plowing the field. That's when a lot of the material gets scraped off and pushed out into the environment. So if you build a field that has containment around it or a place that you can stockpile the snow that's contaminated with all the infill material, that might cost you another hundred thousand dollars. Or, and the purchasing of the recyclable field, another eighty thousand dollars. So now you're talking a premium of three hundred thousand dollars or so to mitigate some of these environmental impacts, bringing the net difference between artificial turf and grass up to more like seven hundred to eight hundred thousand, possibly as high as the million dollars. Okay, natural grass field also has environmental impact. You've got greenhouse gases associated with fuel, water requirements, potential fertilizer. We can mitigate many of these impacts as well. And Mount Greylock has several grass fields that you're going to be maintaining anyway. So we're only talking about incremental difference. We should be looking for maintenance equipment that has lower greenhouse gas emissions associated with it. We need to solve this water irrigation problem regardless of whether we add an artificial turf field or not because of all the other fields we need to maintain. And we would like to propose that we use sustainable growing methods rather than conventional fertilizer. Another issue that's come up often are the health impacts, whether there's injuries or not. I don't really want to get into that debate. I think there's pros and cons on both sides. But our Massachusetts Department of Health has advocated that we need to wash our hands after we use these fields before we eat. It should not be used for passive recreation. We shouldn't be lying down or sitting on this field. We need to be aware of heat related issues. We should take off our clothes and clean them off after use. So I think we need to think about what kind of message are we sending to our kids? That this is the type of play environment that we think is important for them to have. So let's get back to our question. What do we do with all of this stuff? How do we come to a community solution to our field issue? Everything that we do should be directed toward the kids. Every person who spoke tonight wants to do what's best for our kids and for our community. So there's no debate around that. It's just often difficult to figure out what is the best route. We, as individuals and parents and teachers, value different things differently. So I think I've outlined coming up here a four step process. First, we want to look at what's that current situation out there? What's the current condition of our existing infrastructure? What needs to be repaired? What's the maintenance cost? What are our current supports that we're supporting? Then look at our future needs. We have to think that we're not designing this, this field for the kids that are in high school today. In ten years' time, the first grader, today's first grader will be in tenth grade. That's who these fields are really for. And so we need to look at what our student population is going to be like in the five to twenty to ten year horizon. What programs do we want to support? You know, for example, is football going to still be here or not? What, what's happening in other schools? If we can lose twenty percent of our population, is that also happening? Are they fielding the same sports? And this is a really good opportunity to involve the parents, not only of the high school students, but of our elementary school students, and get them engaged in a visioning exercise on what they would like to see at the school. Then we need to get all those alternatives on, on a paper. When we were looking at designing a new school, we use this as an opportunity for people to come together and, and really be creative about what they would like to see. Another great area for community involvement. And then finally, let's put together a financial plan that, you know, considers the capital and operating costs and looks at a number of different funding sources, from the gift, state revenue, tax revenue, fundraising efforts as a whole package. So that when we, when we put our dream facility together, we know we can afford it and we know what things we're paying for and that we've, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned earlier that we come together as a group to define what are the criteria that we're going to use as a, as a collective, as a community to evaluate our various options. So then, you know, I just did a little visioning exercise myself. Here's, you know, what we've been talking about, but maybe we'll do something entirely different where we have a collection of, of small fields and one, you know, central field here. Or we have, you know, creative climbing structures or different informal play areas. Maybe we have an outdoor adventure center where we teach kids, you know, how to, how to go camping or different things like that. So I don't have the solution. I think this is the type of conversation that we want to have with our community, and we want to figure out how we collectively can evaluate alternatives and have them be much broader than just grass versus artificial turf. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Did I use up all my time? Oh, yeah. Do I need to do something? Do I stop sharing here?
Yes.
There we go. Or I can just leave that up all night? Okay, I'm going to mute now.
Thank you, John. Are you all set? You're on mute still, John.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Stephanie and everybody for that. I just want to, this down here. So what I did is I took what Joe Bergeron had done to, on October sixteen for the meetings. And he presented this to the school committee to help update them at the time where things were, because it'd been some time since actually the Phase Two Subcommittee hadn't met since last December. And to give them an idea of where things stood, there had some work been taking place in the process, but hadn't gotten very far. So I use that, I thought he did a really nice job there and wanted to, and I've embellished it to focus on segments that really are, help provide some more background, I thought would be important, since there's been a lot of talk about process. And this was the first slide he had, just to remind us that it was twenty sixteen when Williams College pledged five million, and those cap, those were specifically for the capital needs outside of the Mount Greylock, the building project itself. We know how the college treats the fund as an endowment and how we've had the benefit of it growing with their investments. These, at the time, the specific objective of the gift was to help deal with the MSBA and project limitations. These things included everything from parking to the fields, the district office, essentially all the things that are outlined in the next point, twenty seventeen to present that still exists with us today. To get further into, I'm going to real quick go through the years here. In twenty seventeen, there was a Williams Gift Committee was established. I was part of that gift committee. Carrie Green was, Steve Miller was, Al Terranova was. Actually, I don't think Steve was. It was Al and Carrie. And that was, they were the first group responsible for this and working with Jones Witzler Architects, who did a feasibility study and presented options. The important thing to point out there is they actually did an existing study. The former grounds facilities director, Jesse, was part of that group too, and working with the athletic director and the principals at the time did a thorough, there was a review done of the existing fields and facilities assessment and so forth. That was also one that we received prior through the first year of twenty sixteen that was done by the administration and the school at the time of the building project itself, when they realized they had this gift to help contend with those items that they couldn't include in the actual building project. So we were given that on the Williams Gift Committee, and the district office and field design concepts were proposed in September of twenty seventeen by Jones Witzler in a thorough presentation, and included in at that time was an artificial turf field option. And I'm just underscoring that so that it is clear that it goes back to the original, some of the original design proposals for the fields from the original architects that had worked on it more than three years ago, when an artificial turf field was first presented. At the same time, there was a small little thing going on called regionalization. And then there was a transition committee established that November to carry the, lead the school through the transition to Regional School District. Then at the very end of the year, the new architect, Perkins Eastman, who had been the architects on the building project, were hired. Jones Witzler, Witzit was no longer involved. And then it was twenty eighteen, and that's when the transition committee actually took over the capital gift responsibility. The Williams Gift Committee essentially was sort of disbanded, I guess. And the transition committee took it over, and those were comprised of various school committee members. And that one I know Carrie and Steve were on, as far as current school committee members who were part of that. Perkins Eastman then did their own design concepts to present to the transition committee, and that included a district office with building options that included a garage for facility storage, cross-country ski wax room and bathrooms. And then at the same time, they had the field options contending with the needs of ADA accessibility Title IX field refurbishments. And they too presented a multi-sport artificial turf game field as part of their proposal. So, and this was obviously working closely with the transition committee at the time. The transition committee then established, just again, this is all giving context of where the phrases Phase One and Two came from in the subcommittees that August. And the Phase One Subcommittee was focused on the buildings aspect. Phase Two Subcommittee was tasked with focusing on fields and athletic facilities specifically. So, and the idea at the time was that the buildings might come first, working more in conjunction with the building project itself, and that the fields would probably, by necessity, perhaps come later, because as you'll see in satellite shots, and what Stephanie used, you know, the grounds, there was a lot of demolition occurring and a lot of stuff going on the campus grounds. And then that November, the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee itself was organized. And going into Phase Two, then, that group, they also then went back and looked at what those priorities were both for Phase One and Phase Two, but the Phase Two needs were provided by the administration and the athletics department. Now we get to twenty nineteen, and the Phase Two Subcommittee began its process. And that's the committee I was put, brought back in to help chair. And that committee was comprised of myself, Steve Miller, Al Terranova, Dan Kaplinger, Bill Auger from Lanesboro, and to, and Lindsay Von Holtz as director, athletic director, and then two students, Julius and Talia Capodanno, who you saw on tonight's public comment. They, so we were, took what we were given and specifically had a review from Traverse Landscape Architects, who are a subcontractor, to be clear, to Perkins Eastman. And they reviewed that two thousand and eighteen proposals with us, and that included, again, that recommendation for an artificial turf field. Then it's worth noting that in that process, for the number of meetings we had between January and making the recommendation, we evaluated, we talked to people at the college. We actually looked at John Allen Field again. We actually went back and again as a Subcommittee with a group that was specifically tasked to work on that and asked the same question about using the grass field versus proceeding with the artificial turf option. And it came to the conclusion, for many things are reiterated here, and as you've heard, that the artificial turf option was still the best way to go. So that, then in May, the, the school committee took the recommendation and authorized requests for bids. And again, that was the ADA accessibility, a new softball field. That is what we're talking about when we refer to Title IX, and a new multipurpose artificial turf field and a new track. And the track was in there as an alternate. The decision was made to hold that bid request, again, referencing our sources here and the Traverse advising us, our sources here are usually the college facilities, that it was not ideal to bid going into summer, thinking you were going to get something done in the summer at a cost you could afford. So we put that off, and then the public forum was held in that July when issues came up and concerns were expressed by the community about the recommendation. So what, again, was in that RFP in, that was presented at the time, that happened in August and through September, after the forum, we went through with that. And most of the bids came in, they were about twenty percent average over. An interesting thing, though, was that a number of them, each of them came on budget for at least one aspect of the project. I think this is visual, again, it can't be reminded enough. Stephanie showed it in her thing of where the locations are, and I have some, I actually have the same satellite shot that she used. But the primary goals here were the ADA accessibility, the parking, roads, access out to the baseball and softball fields, the new softball field for Title IX, the new turf field being located here right now, as it is behind the new administration building, lighting, and then a portable bleacher system too, that was similar to what they have at Williams College. Again, so that could be used at almost any field, it could be moved around. And that estimate was two point three, and as I said, they came in higher. One explanation for that, that I think has been mentioned a number of times, but to reiterate, is unfortunately, one of the bidders bid the softball field as an artificial turf softball field, and that was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate compared to what would have been an estimate of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sadly, that would have probably thus come in on target for the whole. For the whole project. And again, we included the alternative of a track and this is where. The remains of the old track are, a lot of people don't know that's there, but there actually was a track there and it's able to be used. I'm just putting up again, the fact throughout this and having the benefits of. The athletic director Lindsay Von Holtz on as part of this, we've always looked at numbers. You heard Brian Gill talk about the impact of PE. That is what ended up emphasizing for this subcommittee, the phase two subcommittee. Why the artificial turf made such a difference. You heard that reference tonight from a few people. But Brian emphasized when he came in and told us how transformative that would be and the number of students it would benefit beyond just athletes. That's what really convinced us that this was the best way to go. The new, so since then, the big cut, obviously there's been a lot of talk and Stephanie reviewed too in her thing about artificial versus grass. This, the, the issue for us has been, and I just referenced this, it is playability. In terms of how that enables the students, the kids to get on the fields. At all different times going in and to the spring. When you're coming out of the winter and the spring, going into the late fall, after rain. And the fact that three seasons are desired on a single field. This would be a game field. And having the lights there for that as well. This, this is something that, you know, in the two years ago, there was a season in the boys and girls soccer where almost every home game. Was played at MCLA ironically enough or deliberately because they have a turf field. And it was not a good turf field. It wasn't even a, it's a first generation, so it wasn't particularly safe. I added, these points up here were in Joe's thing. I added the additional points here of safety, as I mentioned. Safety has always been our number one priority on this and I don't want that to be, to be lost. Dependability and consistency, you heard that and how vital that is. To the programming and not having to reschedule games. And when games get rescheduled, that costs time and money. And is a burden on the kids and the administration. A turf field when it's done is available for immediate use upon completion. A grass field often can take at least a year. And could take longer. Seed is the best way usually to go. That's recommended by architects versus sod. And then there is the conservation factor. You are saving water and other regular maintenance issue. It can get you lead points. We don't necessarily need that, but I just point that out that it's used on some projects. And then the value, the cost per playable hour. Stephanie has some numbers there. We had Trinity Engineering. Which was part of the latter financial review group that Kim Grady, the former superintendent, put together a year or so ago. He took it upon himself to do an evaluation that indicated that the cost per playable hour was certainly more. Beneficial for an artificial turf field. The annual maintenance and refurbishment, he went through the same analysis on that. And then the important thing I wanted to emphasize though is revenue generation. We, I think this has gotten lost in here. On an artificial turf field, you can charge for use of it. In fact, if we go to MCLA or you go. Be, be Berkshire Community College. BCC uses their field, a largely for a community, but they do charge for it. So that is something that is, could ultimately perhaps even pay for itself on a maintenance perspective. And then, you know, Joe said this is a thing and it's important to recognize that the subcommittee's recommendation was remain consistent and unanimous throughout the years. Of this project. The, the face to subcommittee did reveal and wanted to respond to concerns here and took it. When it came to the issue of chrome rubber and last December, you know, was recommended Brockville. As the infill in lieu of the chrome rubber. Helping to eliminate the perceived health environmental concerns associated with chrome rubber. The, the opportunities that came out of that, what this really let us do is use a wood pellets instead of the chrome rubber is what it's comprised of. The disposal issue is eliminated for the pellets because they're actually used to amend the soil of natural soils and surrounding fields. The warranty goes up from eight years to 10 years. And expect the field to last even longer. We conservatively said 12 and our usage, when you talk to how the colleges. Go, we should be able to get at least 15 out of ours, if not longer. And then Mount Greylock can lead by example. We thought this is a great thing because there are very few of these fields. There's none of them in our region. They're being built more and more every day. People are turning to this for all the same reasons. We are recommending it. And that would be more consistent with our values as a school and the community. The, you can require certification. I know Stephanie questioned, but that's one opinion and that's one person there, but we have had reassurances. That you can get PFSA free, PFAS free, the recyclability, everything except the artificial grass backbacking. The backing is the only thing presently that is not recyclable. The belief is, and there are firms that are working on this, that it will be fully recyclable, certainly within the lifespan of our project, of our, our field from here on. The turf costs, look at this, that's the other big thing. Yes, it's about 500,000 for grass and roughly a million dollars for artificial turf. But the bones are comparable. They both have foundation and drainage systems and that's really important to understand because that infrastructure exists for both of them. Grass, it does cost more to maintain. We know that. I mean, we, we talked, Stephanie looked at that too and it depends, but it does depend on the conditions. And it's the internal or external labor, we probably would be using internal. But you would have some external pot perhaps there as well. And what else you use in terms of the products to maintain it, organic or otherwise. The present grass fields that Tim has done a terrific job taking care of, Tim Sears. He spends about $25,000 is allocated per fields and there are seven fields. That's trying to get them back to where they are right now. Both have renewal costs. Again, this is important thing to understand. Replacement costs and those replacement costs are comparable at $500,000. And that timeframe ranges from 10, 15, it could even be up to 20 years depending. On, on grass or depending on the usage, but they're really comparable in terms of, of what, how long. And the amount of money that it costs to actually replace them. And regional school districts, again, how is that usually funded? It's usually funded through excess and deficiency. Which is capped at 5%. Again, this is something Joe pointed out in his summary. That Greylock right now, that's 1.1 million, or you can establish a stabilization fund. Stabilization funds do require the towns to approve that. And which essentially you're putting money aside every year to build that up. And you can always do a town vote to immediately fund something. Well, we have those sources and we have E and D a significant amount right now, but we also have an endowment and no one has ever said we wouldn't have an endowment. And that's very important. So you're looking at at least a couple million dollars perhaps there when you look at E and D and an endowment that's available for this. For the school. Current fields update, this is, sorry. Just Joe also provided this and I want to reference again, Tim Sears has done a great job. With what he's done so far on the fields. PJ, PJC Organics came out last winter and did the study. It did find that every field was pretty much. Poor quality, soil quality was a result of that. And they gave these other recommendations that Tim and his team have been following. And the fields look, they look a lot better and it's, it's been terrific, but it's. Also a matter of maintaining this and this are our current fields, but they've also benefited by the rest they've had. No one's really used those fields. Now sadly, since last fall.
John, sorry to interrupt, about two more minutes.
I'm sorry?
About two more minutes.
Okay, sorry. It's, I, it's a lot to cover for five, five years and two 15 minutes. I'm sorry. Important thing is the irrigation is important and we don't have that. There is no water out there. And that the drainage due location and design and the, and the fields is not good. Early, late season fall, as we know from coaches and talk to them. It's just, and there's a lot of clay in our soil. It's always been a problem at Greylock. Here's the current field. Since you've seen the satellite picture already, I won't go through it at length. And here's the proposed new field location. It's the best site, you know, in terms of drainage and so forth. It's right behind, you'll see down in the left corner here. That's the front of the new admin building. The red dot indicates roughly where that is again, using unfortunately until the satellite goes over and takes picture again with the new property. What we got, the, here is the site in the back. It's important to point out, the yellow here is where bathrooms, public bathrooms were built for the new. To support the fields, that $315,000 investment exists and here's where the track is. The state of the gift, you all have seen this. I'm going to be quick here. That's, it was five million initially, 1.8 million in growth since June, 3.2 committed to date. That went up a little bit based on the last allocation Joe indicated to me, so it's 3.6. And what I really want to emphasize, I'll conclude here is that the time, you know, really is now. It's been nearly a five-year process. The resources are available and we have a gift. Obviously it's grown significantly. We could do the full scope of this project. As recommended last December. Funds have grown in the endowment and the bid environment is favorable, but the urgency is there right now. In fact, according to some people, they're actually desperate for work right now. We have done Brockville and the playability increases. On all fields for all kids, you know, and I, Rob Able did a great job walking through this at mountain one about, on the call before this about how the endowment can grow. Looking at that 1.2 million if it done in the 12 years prior to this would now be 2.8 million approximately. I, you know, I would love to be able, this is all about, as we say, the opportunity for our kids here, as you heard. You know, I realize this may give Dr. Nam Kuhn and Dave Armet less business, but they're okay with that. They're parents. Coach Dills and Ostimer should be able to have, have host games here with consistency and knowing they don't have to reschedule in tournaments. Which would be a fantastic thing. This is the new modern field. It's like why we all have a cell phone now. Julius and Talia, I just love the fact that they were there expressing the emotion. And even though they didn't get play on this field, emphasizing the experience they had as students on teams. And wanting that for their friends who are younger than they are, so they actually even have a better experience. Brian Gill talking about PE and what the impact this will have on them. Peter Harrison saying what it'll do for the Williamstown Soccer Club. These are all people in our community who really have a vested in our leaders and volunteers in many ways. And, you know, the next Joe Finney, you know, moves to town can come and coach on in this field and doesn't have to search for fields. That would be terrific. And probably most of all, then maybe Mark McDermott. I'd love us to do the track and teach Maple how to ride her bike on the track too. But I'm just trying to say, these are all the elements that really come to play here. And the care and sensitivity that has gone into this. So I put in the Greylock way, responsibility, perseverance and integrity. I think this group, this school has tried to prove, perse- perseverance and then some on the case of the phase two subcommittee. But I just really want to emphasize that, that I feel all those things were followed throughout this process through the five years and I really hope we can get this done.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open it up for questions from the school committee members. Raise your hands and I'll call on you. Jose.
Thank you so much, Stephanie and John, for taking up so much of, of your time and energy to, for the both thoughtful, very thoughtful presentations that you just gave us. Like this first question I have just for, for John, because you were a part of the, the phase two subcommittee and the conversations that were happening in, in 2017. You, you, the group was meeting at a time that several communities across Massachusetts were debating. And also putting in place moratoriums on artificial turf, Concord being one of them. I think their moratorium was put in place in 2016. Out of curiosity, were you aware or how was your group? Was your group engaged with any of these other communities as they were also debating and were, were those conversations and debates happening in other communities influencing the work of your subcommittee?
We, we were, they didn't, we, we did a survey, actually Lindsay did a survey of other athletic directors at schools to get a sense. Of what, who had pursued this, that in fact, Jose, the number, we, we looked, the number of fields being constructed in the area where. Artificial turf fields was increasing. At the time and the, that was the way a lot of people were going for all the similar reasons we were looking at it. We did not, and we relied on the expertise of our, our architects and. We, the expertise of Williams College and a number, again, we looked at that, I could dig up the number somewhere, but the number of fields and I believe that numbers continued to increase. As Coach Dills was referencing, as the preferred modern field for all the reasons we pointed out here in order to make sure. Kids can get out on the fields consistently and safely.
Stephanie, do you have a chance, could you, could you respond to both the question, what you heard from John?
Well. There's been a lot of debate in many communities about artificial turf fields. And even just in the very recent past, there was quite a to do at Berkshire Community College. Their situation is a little bit more complicated because they're in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, which we aren't here. I actually feel that. One of the real shortcomings of our environmental regulations is that they don't regulate these fields. So for example, if this field were on the banks of the Green River. You would have to go before the Conservation Commission and they would be asking you, how are you going to prevent any contaminants from getting in the river? Because this field is only connected to the river by a storm drain rather than being right next to it. You don't get asked those questions, even though physically the impact is the same. You will though have to go before the zoning board of appeals. That on projects that aren't within Conservation Commission jurisdiction will be. Under the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals and they will be looking at stormwater impacts. And it is very likely that they will be asking very similar questions. Especially as we see the kind of research that we're seeing out of Europe and people becoming much more aware of the runoff from these fields. Not only in terms of potential contaminants like heavy metals and the PFAS. You know, running off into water and contaminating water, but just the physical components of the field. And even though you put Brockville, which is a wood manufactured product, there's very little information about that. I don't know if there's any chemicals involved with the production of it. But we even get concerned when there's, you know, silt, a naturally occurring material getting into our water stream. So I don't know how that will be perceived by the, by the regulators of this project, but it's certainly something that we want to look into. And. I, I think communities that have a hard time, you know, Marblehead and other communities, I mean, some states are looking at banning. Artificial turf. People are certainly looking toward better products and. You know, all of us really want our kids to get out and play. You know, I am a huge advocate for, for sports. I am outside every day, pretty much all year round, myself personally. But I think everything that we do has, has a cost and has an environmental impact and has a financial cost and we have to balance those things. And we also have to teach our kids how to have a community conversation. How to make decisions when it's really difficult, how to sometimes turn down things that, that we want because the implications are just too great. And that, I think Molly Pope talked about that today. That's really what's been missing. In this, in this conversation is like all of us just sitting down and really listening to each other. Like I'm even finding tonight very difficult because we're all. You know, we have the same goal. We want to do the right thing. We're a community that really cares and somehow. Instead of working together to create a vision, you know, we're pitting one team against another because we're doing this. Too far at the end of a process that is John says has been going on for years. Anyway, I know I'm digressing, so I'm going to stop.
I, I just, I do.
Can I ask a follow-up question on the, on the increase of artificial turf fields? Is, do you have a breakdown on where that increase was occurring, incurring in terms of, were those. In metropolitan areas versus rural areas where we have the ability?
I mean, I've seen numbers of more field, you know, there are more and more artificial turf fields every year, whether they're growing faster than grass fields. I, I know they have problems of them, like in, in California, Fornia, excuse me. I saw a database where they were listing all the fields in the lead contamination. Now I think there's less lead in these fields now because they're changing some of the paint and some of the products. But yeah, there's more of them. Whether they're growing faster than grass, I.
I'm going to reiterate what a point that was made too. There, there wouldn't be the demand for them and one of the miscon- And one of the misconceptions around traverse was that they were only an artificial turf group. The only reason they had a lot of artificial turf going is because of the demand and asking for it. And places like Williams College and private schools and other major school districts would not be proceeding and building them if there were, if they felt they, they weren't safe and provided a real benefit and resource that we've discussed. So I'm.
I don't, I don't think that anybody.
Saying, but I'm just saying that, that was it. And so.
I don't think anybody is debating the benefit. They, you can certainly play a grass dominant sport in the middle of the winter with an artificial turf field. Like that is the benefit of these fields. What the.
We're not looking for the middle of the winter.
Is the cost worth.
I think Julia has a question.
First, I'd like to reiterate Jose's gratitude. I, I recognize this has been going, these conversations have been going on for a long time. So deeply appreciate the two of you coming here tonight and all of the public comment that we heard. I think it was, for me, exceptionally valuable. I, I want, I appreciate the point that you made, Stephanie, that nobody's debating the benefit of, of a playable, dependable field. I'm trying to understand what costs that comes with. And I have a question for each of you on that front. Stephanie, you provided a comparison of natural grass fields versus, using an NPV model of natural grass versus turf. And I'm curious if you know that embedded, how that natural field cost was calculated? And did it include your fixing the Greylock irrigation issues? Or, and/or the sustainable practices that have been identified as potentially desirable? Or was it just?
So I, yeah, so I use the numbers provided by the Phase Two Committee because I didn't want to get into a debate about whether I had chosen the right numbers to use or not. It does not include irrigation because I don't have a number for that. And I think there are, yeah, I don't know if anybody does yet. It does include fairly high annual maintenance cost for the grass field, $35,000 a year. It includes a very high replacement cost for a grass field in 10 years that none of us who are involved with grass fields believe needs to be done.
So. And that was, that's my question to John. I, what, do you know, John, from those numbers, what, what gets replaced with a natural grass field? What, what, what drives that replacement cost?
It's, I, I just, we just got an update, Joe and I did from the Architects Day on how this works. But they actually, first of all, a real natural grass field, you do need irrigate to. The, the challenge here was trying to do apples to apples. So it's a performance grade natural grass field to be comparable and as close as, it's never going to be comparable, but as close as possible to an artificial turf field. And that's very tricky. And Jim Easton's comments would talk about how difficult it is to maintain. He maintains a golf course, a grass game field can't have, you can't have it real thick. The, you know, one thing they advocate on grass, I mean, I do it in my own yard, is keeping it taller. It keeps out weeds, it do other things, but that's not the type of field you can play competitive sports on. The other point that was important to make is that if you just did a performance grass field, you would limit the use of that field, two games probably only and not practices. And you would not let PE go on it. And you could not have revenue generated for it because you're not going to want anybody else to use it. So there's a usage factor there. It actually works contrary to the greater playability. We'd have all our other fields. And again, I want to emphasize, no field is being sacrificed for this of all the grass fields we have. This is meant to be looked at as a resource of an additional thing and that works in tandem with the grass fields we have. No one has said that they, I mean, grass, we all love playing on grass. No one's saying they don't like that. This is giving you that ability to conduct and play your games and for Brian to get PE outside, which has never been more important than ever. And he's advocated for that long before there was a pandemic. To do that when you normally wouldn't be able to do. And, and that's a really important thing. But on a grass field, what they emphasize is that you need to, if it's at performance level, you basically have to dig it back up. You're almost redoing it except for certain parts of the drainage system. Both of them have a drainage system that's imperative in order to take water and manage water. The important thing on a grass field though is you, you have irrigation and you need to provide water to it. Water has become one of our most precious commodities. That's sort of being left a lot out of the equation here at times. And the other concern for us was the wells. There is not a public water supply out to the high school. There was an opportunity for that once and I'll spare that story. So I was involved with it. But the matter is, when you have wells, you, you only have a limited supply. You don't know how much you have, but with the fire suppression installed with the new building, I do know that the demand on those wells is high, that water has, there has to be water available. Joe, maybe, or someone else can answer this better. But there's even potentially less water available than there was previously because of what you have to do to maintain fire and other safety at the school itself before you can use it for irrigation. So. And you, you wouldn't want to not irrigate because then you would basically be risking your investment. You know, in a performance level grass field, you wouldn't build a performance level grass field without irrigation.
Yeah, Michelle, did you have a question?
Well, yes, I have a few questions, but um, so number one, it sounds like the irrigation thing would be the same for either field. So you're going to have to put an irrigation, irrigation system in. I don't know if there's a significant cost difference between the two styles of fields. But regardless, we need an irrigation system because it's very clearly, our irrigation isn't great at Mount Greylock. So that I feel like is kind of a level for both. I'm trying to see, I'm trying to understand for myself. So number, I don't know how to put it, okay. So I, I feel like if it's minus two degrees outside and there's a turf field that we've just plowed, that you're going to hoof all the PE students out there for gym class. So as an elementary school teacher, when the wind chill gets below a certain amount, we don't even take our kids out who have their snow pants, their coats, their hats, their mittens, out to, out to the field to take their 20-minute recess. So I, I feel like some of this is, we're going a little bit really far in one direction, a little bit really far in the other direction. I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is pull out what's realistic. So do I think we're going to bring PE class out in 10-degree weather? I don't think we are because high school kids do not dress properly, at least mine don't. So I, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing this field being used in all, in all seasons, frankly. I feel like, I, I don't understand, I'm with Julia, I don't understand what, what, why we would need to completely replace it and why we would consider it a performance field. If we're really saying that the only grass, grass option is a field that can only be played on for games, that's not realistic. We're not a, we're not a D1 school that has thousands of kids playing on this every, every year. So I, you know, I feel like there are some ways to make a a, a, a natural organic option that don't have to make it a, a field that some, that we can't put PE on. I mean, frankly, PE should almost be the primary target, in my opinion, that's all students. You know, there's, I had a lot of questions about, um, um, let's see. So, so we say it's always playable, but then we're saying it's maintenance-free. Well, it can't always be playable if, if there's no maintenance. You'd have to do some maintenance to make it playable, I would, I would think, right? Yeah. I do have some concerns about the fill, Brockfill or otherwise, leaking out and into any water supply, frankly, regardless of what it's made of. The cleanup of that, the replacement cost of that. You know, I, I guess I just, my, my biggest concerns are cost. It, I guess was what it boils down to. So I don't know if I have any questions, but those are really my thoughts. So I mean, I, I mean, a lot, I don't really understand that some of these are the same for both a grass and a turf field. So I'm, I'm in total 100% agreement that we need a new field, period. I absolutely think we need a new field. We absolutely need to make Title IX and ADA improvements. Those are of paramount importance, in my opinion. So I, I, you know, I, I can't see how a turf field is going to pay for itself with fees.
Can I make a quick comment there, Michelle?
Saying it was paying, it would pay for the, it, that was just an opportunity demonstrated, Michelle. I, I could answer and go through a lot of this. I, I don't know where to start, to be honest with you on it. We, on the seasonality thing, no one is saying we're going to play in the middle of the winter. In fact, the committee has specifically said, we didn't need to invest in that. We don't need to get in the winter. It's really about getting it onto the field at the end of the shoulder seasons, I guess is the best way to call it. When you get rained out in the fall or snow comes early and you can't get on, lacrosse is a new sport, a growing sport here. And you can't get on the grass fields in the spring. And no, Brian's not going to take people out in the middle of the winter, but it enables him to get out when maybe the fields are too wet. Again, drainage is a big issue on our fields. They're often too wet to go out. So this would, you could get them out on a turf field and they could participate in any number of the activities. He, he's very creative about doing. So I, I'm trying to remember what else, else there was.
Can I just make a quick comment?
And I guess there, there's, you don't need irrigation, I'm sorry, for a turf field. I'm not sure if that's what you thought was necessary, but you don't.
Could I, could I make a quick comment? One, you know, I demonstrated that we're having a net difference in price somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars. So there is a lot of savings of using the grass field since the remaining grass fields are still a very much integral part of the Greylock athletic infrastructure and they need to be improved. We've heard that many, many times from almost everybody who spoke this evening, that the grass fields are in very bad shape and now we're working on improving them. One of the things that will help improve them is a irrigation system. So we could take the savings of not building an artificial turf field and build an infrastructure that supports all the fields so that the net benefit to the school is much higher. Another thing that we've learned from people who are involved with working on natural grass with organic maintenance practices is that they are much more resilient and much, in much better condition than the infrastructure that we have up there today. So unfortunately, we are consistently comparing a nice new synthetic artificial turf field with very bad, poorly maintained grass fields. And regardless of what happens, we have to improve that maintenance. And so that's where I would advocate is that we build an infrastructure that has consistent maintenance practices across all the fields and we will have a net improvement and in, in the fields for the school.
So we are approaching 8:02. So are there any last questions from the school committee before we ask for a motion to adjourn? Jose?
Sorry, Julie, I saw your hand up as well. This is a quick question for, for John. In the, the, the work that the Phase Two Subcommittee was doing and, and the recommendation for, for artificial turf, what was the warranty that was going to be a part of a potential purchase? And I asked this because in the brief reading that I've done, there are, you know, certainly a number of cases where the turf has been defective and fibers afraid. The numbers ranged from, from, you know, something scary like 30% of all, you know, installed turf in New Jersey is, was defective. Several school districts are in litigation with, with companies. I mean, it's lots of, lots of scary stuff out there. But in, in for the Phase Two Subcommittee, what was the, the warranty of the particular material that was being recommended?
It was, it was eight years for chrome rubber, Jose, but the 10 years is on Brockfill. Again, we have the benefit of Williams College here has had the experience of one first generation turf field. Now they have two other turf fields, having replaced one already. They've been a tremendous resource for us. They use Clark Companies. They had a little issue too with their first, when they put in the Weston Field. It undulated some, but they said Clark was a tremendous company to work with. They came out, fixed it, they did not charge for it. These companies, the ones that anyone we would want to do business with, we are confident, you know, we don't, we would want to do somebody that's going to stand by the product. But the Brockfill is actually 10 years and it's all based on use. And we also know about maintenance from them and I, we talked to the grounds people there and how, what it takes. They use chrome rubber, the most of the money they spent was on replenishing chrome rubber. Again, we went by this, I can't emphasize enough, we tried to, we, the emphasis was to respond. And we're excited about Brockville. I don't know why people don't get more excited about it. It's, it's terrific, it's sustainable, does all that. You don't have to, you know, have the chrome rubber goes away. And it's a, when you're done with it, you disperse it on the other fields and it amends them. It's really a terrific thing. You, we can point to the website, we could have someone come talk to you further about it. But it is, we felt that that was really a tremendous option. Because again, when it comes to irrigation on things, we heard from the experts, Jim Easton at Saconic and others in this community, it is just really hard water, grass just won't solve the problem. And that's what we keep trying to come back to. And we, we are trying to get kids out there safely, consistently, dependably. And that's not just athletes, it's the PE, it's the, it has the potential benefiting every kid at, at Greylock. That's what really moved the committee.
Thank you, John. Julia? You're on mute, Julia.
Sorry, the phrase of 2020.
Really good about that, but apparently not this evening. I, so I apologize, this might be a longer question and I just want to name that. It, it gets to process. I, and that's one of the things that really I'm kind of struggling with, both really understanding the process that got us here as well as flawed or not, it is where we are and what do we do with that? So like, that's what I'm, you know, and, and in particular, it's I, the questions raised around voice. Stephanie, in your presentation, you suggested a way we move forward. And John, I know in your work, the Phase Two Subcommittee both received a request from the school committee as well as followed their own process to kind of move the, move the ball forward. I'm trying to understand, looking at Stephanie's proposal, which makes a lot of sense to me, what has, in your mind, John, already happened? And I, and I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. And I apologize, that's a longer question and I recognize.
I, I tried to go through the entire, kind of quickly, background of, of what has gone on and the number. I think the point there was the number of different subcommittees, school committees, different architects, everybody who have evaluated this and worked with the administration to go through it. And then subsequent to this, the, we've, we've had one, there was a major, you know, we had a forum in July last year. We've gone through, we've engaged, I don't, and at the meetings, Stephanie, I mean, we, I, I held very open meetings. Just sat at the table and Connor, other people had sat at the table when we conducted our meetings. I'm not sure what.
So, so one, one question in particular, for example, as I look back at the minutes, there, I think it was the January 2019 minutes maybe, in which there was a reference to a need to do a strategic plan for the athletic infrastructure. And, and I don't know how that, if that happened. So, so like one of the questions I, I come back to is how, how, like how does this fit into a long-range plan for the athletic program? During school and after school? And without my seeing what that is, then I fear we all end up landing in a place where we're only voting on what we think is right, instead of a, a big picture where this fits in.
Could I, can I make a, a quick comment there, Julia? I think we've struggled with this issue a couple of times. I mean, I've been asked at least twice, I was trying to think today, whether it was three times, to be on a new committee, one got put in place and then disbanded. One got put in place and then disbanded, and then one almost got put in place, and then we had a pandemic. And so I think your question is legitimate. Like, we're all been feeling a little bit uncomfortable about the process. And I don't say that in any way to be critical of the people who have worked on this to date. Like, sometimes it just takes a couple of, of runs to really figure out what, what we need to do. I must say personally for myself, when I first heard about artificial turf field, I'm like, oh, whatever. But then, once I dug into it, I'm like, yeah, this is a really interesting, complex issue that we need to take our time on. But more importantly, whether we did the process right or not in the past, we've had so many changes in the last couple of months that, you know, if the decision had been made and the project was built, we'd have to live with it. But now we have an opportunity to say, hey, we now know our school population is going to be dramatically different. We now know there's going to be dramatic changes due to the pandemic. We don't quite know what they are yet, but it might behoove us to sit down and think about that a little bit longer. We have new people on the committee, we have new kids coming into the school. Like, let's just take a deep breath, step back, and we now recognize the community wants to be more engaged than they were before. You really need to engage people at the beginning of the process rather than at the end. Like, at the end right now, I feel like we're ripping the presents out of the kids' hands from under the Christmas tree. We need to talk to people about what their priorities are, how would we evaluate projects? Not have only one alternative on the table that we're evaluating. We have not really had a serious look at what can grass do and what will it take to make it functional at Graylock? We have not seriously evaluated that option, and here we are trying to pick between the two of them. Like, we just have to step back and, and rethink some things. That's not to say that the work that's been done isn't valuable. There's a lot of good stuff there, but we need to put it in context of other alternatives.
I, I'm just, I have to push back on that. The, this, the whole driver for this was what would be the maximum benefit to the maximum number of students? We heard it loud and clear from the administration. This has been identified back since 2016 as one of the priorities. Okay, the whole, the, the, dealing with the fields. It's, I believe it was Coach Dills who even said, you know, we have this incredible school, we spend the money on the school. We have all these wonderful facilities and our fields don't, they, they aren't consistent. They, they, they are almost an embarrassment, I think, was the word he used. But that's in the, but the school has felt that they've recognized that need all along. It has always been there as a very real need. There are 70, it's upwards of 70% of kids participate in some form of, of athletics at, at Graylock. That is an extraordinary number. The PE, that wellness is an inherent part of the curriculum at the school, unlike many other schools. I didn't know that. I didn't know what an important part, significant part it was until I became involved in this, was asked to do this. It's, both of those things make it stand out such that the role of athletics and physical education are some significant and vital integral parts of the curriculum and, and what, and, and Graylock, and, and it's synonymous with it, of these well-rounded kids that come out of there. This is an established need that's been there a while. We have gone, the process, people have evaluated that and gone through it for five years in different ways. So.
Michelle, I see your hand up.
That'll be the quickest question ever, I promise. I will not ramble this time. So, so I, I, I hear you that there's, there has always been a need for it. So here, I'm coming back to like a basic question I have was, did we, or did we or did we not, or did the committee, or did the committee not explore a grass field and what the cost would be? And why or why not?
I'm sorry?
Did we get a quote for, did we ever explore replacing it with a grass field rather than turf?
Yes, we explored it. We didn't get a quote, if that's what you asked. No, because that would have cost more money to do the design and you, to get a bid. The, they explained, you're kind of, the same people who build turf build grass. So you're actually then put it in their hands to decide for you, because they'll bid. They can respond to those bids in whatever way may lend itself to what they feel like they'd rather build for you. It's not, there's not just people who make artificial grass fields or people who make natural grass fields. It's the same providers usually.
So I guess I'm looking to understand what made us dismiss the grass field.
Again, it was a matter of playability, the season out. I could go back through what I talked about, I, I'm happy to. But it's, it, it's that issue that you can't playable hours. You can't play as many hours on a grass field in our seasonality and what it, and the impact it has on those programs, especially athletics and PE, to get out, be able to conduct their programs successfully. It, it, and the school identified this, we, we got this from the administration. I feel like I'm here, I, I was given these things on the Phase Two Committee, and I, but I, we believe in them, and we had a very, one of the best subcommittees possible in terms of makeup. You had two students on it, you don't often get that. You had the athletic director, three school committee members. And again, and two, I, I was represented for Williamstown and one from Lanesboro. And this, we, there was unanimous agreement throughout this on the, when we went through it. And we follow all the open meeting, do every, everything according to the way they're supposed to be conducted and felt really good about this and, and what this was gonna provide for our kids.
Yeah, John, it's, I wasn't in any way trying to personally, I'm just trying to understand how the decision was made to only get a quote on the turf field rather than get a quote that we could compare apples to apples.
Because grass doesn't work.
Yeah, it doesn't work. So the, the issue too, was the school, it was last January, I think, the school committee decided, you know, they had another proposal to get, you have to do new bid documents and so forth to do that, and it, it just didn't seem like a good use of the money because they've already gone through and spent money before to do, to go through that whole process, when again, it doesn't solve the problem. We, as a subcommittee, I mean, we, we, we have been very conscious about the money. We looked at that, hence the portable bleacher idea, for example, versus doing fixed bleachers. Because again, they could lend themselves to the grass fields because the bleachers that are there right now are falling apart. The goalposts, I mean, it's, it's all pretty decrepit, but the idea was, again, these things work in tandem. There's the artificial turf field and there's the grass field, and you have the ability to move and rotate between them and use them depending on the situation. But this, the artificial grass field affords you that dependability and consistency and safety and to do your games no matter what, unless there's lightning or thunder. So.
Just one more brief comment. So you may have heard from components of the natural grass field that it was not considered seriously. And I think when people say that, what they mean is that there are some experts who work in this area of natural gas, which is a little bit different than what a typical landscape architect might provide. And so the dissatisfaction comes from not having consulted with some of those experts on how we might build one of those, what the actual cost might be, what the maintenance implications and performance of those fields. I don't think it's necessary to have gone as far as having two sets of bid documents, but I think we could have gone a little farther at really understanding cost and performance and the trade offs and had a broader input on to our community's priority.
An expert tonight said grass won't grow.
Did I hear somebody say something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, unfortunately, this isn't a public forum like our meeting at 5:00. For, yeah, so I think somebody is trying to pipe in. But we are, thank you, we are encroaching on, it's now 8:18. So I just want to make sure that our newer members don't have any further, hopefully, quick questions. And then we should really adjourn this meeting. But I do really appreciate both of you for coming and presenting tonight.
Thank you both.
Thank you for tonight.
There's someone there's someone in the chat that is asking if they can pose a question. And I think we had said that this was just the committee posing questions. So to clarify that the questions are not open to the public.
Correct. Thank you.
I would throw out there, if that person wants to email their question to the school committee for us to include in our continuing deliberations, that's more than welcome.
Absolutely. Okay, um, I don't see any further questions from the committee. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Elfin Bay.
Moves, do I have a second?
I've yet to second, so I will second Curtis.
Jose seconds, any further discussion? All in favor, roll call alphabetically, please.
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Constantine, I.
Open by an I.
Green eye.
Hudson eye.
Miller, I.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned at 8:20 PM. Thank you all, it is really appreciated, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.